So calling to order Kingsburg Planning Commission meeting an offer Thursday, April 14th, 2022. Okay. Uh, we'll take roll call first.
Commissioner Bellin.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here. And I see we had someone on the phone as well today. Yes. Okay, great. Public comments, any person may directly address the commission at this time on any item not on the agenda or on any items that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. A maximum of five minutes is allowed. Do you know anyone in chambers?
Oh, Mr. Wilson would like to come and speak.
Okay. All right.
You bet.
Stand up to my people and say what you need to say.
Well, the reasons I'm here is we've been working on getting a permitting business park for almost two years, June of 20, for a pre-engineered metal building. And actually, Kingsburg came to us with some incentives to get that place started because it's set for 15 years. We've owned that property over 15 years. I understand that this pandemic thrown a loophole, and I've had it happen in two other counties too. But now all of a sudden, they don't have any of our prints. I've given them two flash drives of all the stuff. I have proof of in 21 that they received all the structural drawings, footings, and everything. And all of a sudden, that stuff's gone. And we need, that building's been built for over a year. It's sitting in a stack at the manufacturer in Tulare. We've lost over a year of rent. It's already, it's done. It's rented. We were gonna start on the second building. We need a permit. Basically it. I will bring hard copies of everything in, but I want them stamped and I want it done.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's enough.
Thanks for coming in.
You have my card and mail, too.
Yep.
No additional public comments. And then on the line, we'll move on to the workshop with Holly Owen.
I'm glad to be here. We have a small group, a small enthusiastic group here, so I'm happy to have that at least. And we have a couple of things to talk about and just a general wide-ranging discussion about accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. So we love our abbreviations. We like to shorten words and do a lot of acronyms, but I think we've settled on this one, especially since state law also has settled on it, and we are now calling these structures officially anyway, accessory dwelling units or ADUs. They used to be known as granny flats or second units, accessory dwelling units, casitas, even tiny homes when they were on permanent foundations. But whatever you want to call them, they are a second livable unit on a single property as another home. They do provide a complete habitable space in a variety of ways, and often like rental income for the primary property owner. There's also something called a J-ADU or a junior ADU, and that's a type of conversion ADU that's no more than 500 square feet, and that is within the walls and the roof line of the existing primary dwellings. So you can have, it's kind of like a gap space or a living, a secondary living space. Somebody, some places call it mother-in-law units, but it has an efficiency kitchen and it can or doesn't have to share bathrooms with the primary residence, but it is limited to 500 square feet. Now, in that case, the owner occupancy of either unit is required, that means that they can rent out one or the other, but not both. But that's only for junior ADUs. So there are a number, there's several types of ADUs really. There's the attached ADUs, which are like an added on to your single-family home. And sometimes they don't even look like an ADU. They just look like an extension of your house. The detached ADUs are freestanding buildings, and that's kind of typical. If you look on Pinterest or Google ADUs, you'll see a lot of backyard ADUs. They're unattached to the single-family home or the apartment kind of building, depending on where they're built. Conversion ADUs are built by converting part of either the existing primary home, like the attic, basement, even the garage, or all or part of an accessory building, like let's say you have a poolhouse or a big shed in the backyard into a new home. So that's called a conversion ADU. So here's, if you just, as I say, if you look on Pinterest or Google Images or whatever, a lot of websites, you'll see examples of detached ADUs. And for instance, the one on the left there kind of mimics a Craftsman-style architectural features, which ideally would match the primary house. The middle one is kind of a New England salt box type structure, and then the more modern ones are on the right hand side. So you'll see a wide variety of these if you go online or different plan books. A lot of people are starting to offer these as construction opportunities for residences. Here's pictures of attached ADUs, and like I mentioned, some of them just look like extensions of a house, but this was from plan books from contractors who are offering this as an alternative to people who want to add up their house, create a completely legally separate unit and have it get blended in well with their existing home. So you see the first picture, they have that extension, that bigger wing out there, and they have a separate entrance there, so they have their own private entrance. The one on the right, the unit that's above the single garage there, I thought that that was an interesting illustration of a design feature where they, the windows were, I imagine somewhat deliberately not placed on the side there to overlook the next door neighbors. So there was an attempt at keeping some privacy, even though it was a two-story add-on. And the third one is a junior ADU, at least advertised as such on the contractor's website. It's just like a wing of a house, and that's on the right-hand side there. So I would think it would have a separate entry, actually from the left-hand side, you can see there's a separate entry, and then, you know, they have their own living space. So basically, they have like a shared wall, but it's not a completely separate unit. So let's go do a summary of legislative actions, but frankly, it got too lengthy because there's been a lot of law that's affected ADUs. There's been eight new laws alone since 2019. The original law first was passed in 2017. When that happened, a lot of cities, like the ones I was working in, we were a little panicked. We felt we need to get an ordinance right away. You know, we have to get something on the books. We have to, you know, give us some guidelines and figure out how to process these and tell the public how to do this. But it turns out that hanging back was probably a good idea because over time, the laws kept changing and changing. And so people who were right out of the gate writing an ordinance to try to review and approve these were already, you know, it was already superseded the next year by some other piece of law. So we really have, in some ways, the time is better now, several years later, as the legislative actions have defined and changed what is and isn't allowed. So I think one of the questions is, what's off the table? What can't we regulate? What are we required to permit and what is outside of our program? Well, we can't allow them only in certain parts of town or on certain streets or, you know, it's basically a right for every residential zone in every city or county. We can't, without ordinance, we can't allow ADUs less than 850 square feet. We can't have a hearing. It's not a discretionary item. It's a ministerial item, and when I say ministerial, I mean it's named house review. It doesn't come to planning commission, and there's no noticing. So neighbors will not necessarily know what's going on until an ADU is built in their backyard, which is, you know, of some concern, and that's why looking at what you can and can't control is pretty important. It used to be that parking was required. If you took your garage and you converted it to living space, which you were allowed to do if it was to a building code, you would have to provide equivalent parking. That law changed, I believe, last year. So now there's no parking that's required. You can take your garage, you can make it living space if you follow the building code and follow the process and make it legally habitable, and people just can park on the street or park in the driveway. So that's a fairly big change. We also cannot require parking if it's within a half a mile of public transit. Now, there was some disagreement as to what was the definition of public transit, especially in the small towns, because we have dial rides and, you know, some kind of limited public transit compared to bigger cities. But it was determined that public transit is indeed what Kingsburg has and a lot of other cities in the valley have, which is sort of, you know, an on-demand or a smaller schedule of opportunities to take public transit. So we cannot, we can only require parking for any ADU. In terms of site and rear setbacks, we can't require more than four feet. That, I think that there were jurisdictions that were proposing a range of setbacks, and then the legislature said, you know, we're gonna step in here and do this for you. So that has been done. We can't require a seat or review. I imagine that in certain areas of sensitive habitat, you could argue that an ADU should or that no structure could be, should be built, like in a floodplain or in, you know, or in an area where there's a protected species, you would have, I think you'd have cause to refuse a permit for an ADU. I don't believe that Kingsburg has a lot of that in the city limits, so it's probably off the table for us, maybe not in a place like Santa Barbara. And we have, we cannot currently require owner occupancy. This is a big change. In the past, most ordinances were written with the intent of strengthening owners, ownership, property ownership, and then their participation in the larger community. What the outcome was supposed to be was people who were invested in the community, not to say the renters wouldn't be, but I think that the intent was that you could have a rental unit, but there would still be a primary residence or vice versa, that somebody would own the property and live on the property. And now that's changed. I'll get into a little bit more of that later, but we can, you know, longer do that as our ordinance, you know, ordinance. And then there's a time limit. You must process it within 60 days if, you know, somebody has a complete adaptation that we're required to move quickly to reviewing it and, you know, approving it or not within a time limit. So what does that leave us? Hello, sir? Sorry. Come on, come on up to your seat. So what, what can we, what can we regulate in terms of, you know, what is left for us to put in an ordinance? We can regulate a height. We can require, for instance, that the height matches the existing structure, because really for proportionality, if nothing else, you know, you wouldn't want to have it be the same, probably the same height as the primary residence, not towering above that. There is some lot coverage requirements that we can have. I don't know if the city of Pomona has something in their ordinance that I want to take a closer look at, because my desire is that there's a sense of proportionality for, depending on how, I think it makes design sense. I think it's just, it's appropriate for the open space that you might have in your backyard. And so, for instance, the city of Pomona has a 35% maximum lot coverage, and that would be the primary residence and an ADU. I think that's pretty conservative, actually, but I would like to investigate that more and see how far we could go with that.
Yeah, that doesn't sound bad.
And if we have, we didn't have a maximum size of 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet for more than one bedroom. Now, there was, there was an ordinance that said, from another city, that said that they, you could have an ADU that did not exceed 50% of the existing living area with, or 850 square feet, whatever is smaller. So there, once again, you're getting at that sort of proportionality idea, and I think that that is appropriate for lots of reasons, especially into the smaller lots that we have that are in the city. Design, we could request that the roofing and/or siding material of an ADU matched the existing primary structure, so it all looks like it belongs in, you know, within that context. I did notice that the city of Santa Barbara has a checklist that they use, and they were pretty particular about window placement, especially with second-story ADUs, and the sensitivity to adjoining properties and keeping that, you know, that privacy for somebody, you know, the neighbors next door or the neighbors across the street in the alley. So I think that's certainly worth a look. We could also require a shared drive approach with the primary residence unless fire doesn't allow that. It's never really occurred to me that somebody would want two driveways on their lot to get one to get to the ADU and one to get to, it depends on the size of your lot. If you have a large frontage, you know, maybe that, that would be practical, but I think that's to keep, I think, the front yard and the front appears of the house from looking like a lot of driveways running to, you know, to the back. And so that's something that I think would be worthy to consider. You could also specify the entryways, of which, you know, is a requirement for ADUs, so they have a separate entry into their unit, that you could have them in the side or the rear and not in the front. Again, it's just, it's just a visual mostly, where they can have their privacy, it would be looking like a lot of doors in the front. You can? You certainly can require that, well, and the state law says that these are not meant to be short-term rentals. Now, I think that there are, there are those who skirt that law, and that's another enforcement task for another day, but especially in destination cities, you'll see that. But I think the intention was that these are supposed to be long, these are supposed to be housing for people and not, you know, a drop-in vacation thing. And although the money that can be made in destination cities for vacation rentals is a very lucrative pursuit, it's probably, you know, for, the intent is that we're providing housing for those, you know, more permanent needs, not a vacation need. Solar and sprinklers. It's interesting, in new construction, new construction requires solar to be on a house. If you build an ADU and you don't have solar on your primary, then you, according to the law and according to what I've read, you have to either put solar on the ADU or on your primary house. So it still maintains that requirement. Same with sprinklers. If your, if your house is sprinkled, and if it's newer, maybe it is, then you won't need to sprinkler your ADU. If it's not, you don't need to do that. The fire separation between buildings, I think that's kind of a non-negotiable. I think it's 10 feet. I'd have to check with the local, the fire chief in the local jurisdiction, but that's my recollection. So where you place that, especially if it's a detached ADU, where you place that in relation to the primary residence could certainly be something that you could require. So let's talk a little bit about garage conversions, too. I put something in your packet about that. The reason why I did that is that that seems to be the source of more of our local interest. People have, we've probably went six months since I've been here, with not a lot of ADU interest, and then we got a flurry about three weeks ago, maybe, starting a month ago, that of people coming in asking. And so obviously, they had read something or heard something about, hey, you can turn your garage into a, you know, into a rental unit. So we had to scramble back and say, well, yes, but, yes, and you can't. It's true that replacement parking is not required, and that's a big deal right there for folk. But we do think that most of the interest in this is that it's perceived to be more affordable than building a freestanding detached ADU. And that might be true. It really depends on the state of the garage and how old it is and what needs to be done to it to make it habitable space according to building code. And that could be kind of a, that could be kind of a heavy lift. I was talking to the building inspector this past week about this, and it's not only a second entrance and windows, and you need to provide a source of heating and cooling because often those are not conditioned spaces. So you'd have to put a split system into your garage, but then he mentioned something as simple as a slope, that usually a garage floor has a little bit of a slope to it, but that's not habitable space according to building code. So there's certain items that, you know, people would need to be aware of before they got too far down the road with that. We're glad they're coming in to talk to us. We'd rather have them do that than just do, convert it illegally. But, but there are, you know, there's a perception that it's, that it's an easy, an easy thing, and, you know, the devil's always in the details for that. So I was curious about process, because it's one thing to look at an ordinance, but you really also want to give the public roadmap. That's a great example of the roadmap. Or just a path to permitting, what to be, what they can expect and what the city can offer and services. And the step three, I think, especially for garage conversions, would be necessary and useful. Whether it's a no-fee inspection or not, that's up to council, you know, it's up to the city staff, but a courtesy inspection on the space, an existing unbuilt space for what would be needed to make it habitable space according to building code would be very valuable to get accurate quotes for that kind of instruction. So along with ordinance writing comes some of the flyers, handouts, public outreach to make sure that people understand what would be required and really, you know, how we want to encourage it, but also make sure that they do it in a safe and legal way. So just to know that the ordinance, typical ordinance processes that your staff will research, they'll draft an ordinance, they'll run it by the city attorney, they'll bring it to planning commission, the commission talks about it, looks at it, you know, moves it out to the city council, the city council looks at it, ideally approves it, they wait for 30 days to make it law, and then it's entered into your municipal code. But there's an extra step here with legislature, and this is part of their authority over all things housing. They have informed the cities that when they do an ADU ordinance, that they want to review for accuracy. And not only do they want to review it, but they give you a grade, like literally an A to F grade, like in schools. And so you can go on the website and see that there are cities that have submitted ordinances, and they, you know, they get A, D minuses, S, whatever. And one good thing about being a planner is that there's no, there's no penalty for looking over the shoulder of the good students and copying what they've done. And that's exactly what I think a number of cities are doing, is that they've seen the cities that have more pressure for this, but also the cities that are more well-staffed and have a priority, you know, draft these ordinances, and then we're gonna fall behind and look over their shoulders and copy the, copy the work of it, of those who've gone before, and alter it to our own, our own views. And that's certainly, you know, my intention. I've started looking at some just this week to see, oh, who are they? You know, who are the A students? Who are the B students? What is this? What can I grab from this that would be applicable and useful to Kingsburg? So that's, that's my homework assignment for Kingsburg, among other things. And I'm hoping that what comes out of this is some sort of legally defensive, objectable, objective standards that we can apply, battling for height and for design, placement on the lot, you know, anything that seems sensible to me that we could use, all while allowing this to go forward because we're, you know, we're legally required to do that. And I think, you know, if it's well-built and it's placed well, it's an asset to, you know, add to your property value. It certainly during COVID, it was shown as a great way to pump back to either an office or, you know, your adult children or, you know, all kinds of uses that people tell them for extra space. And some of that is detached and some of that is attached. And I know a number of people who have, who have both. So they have, you know, they either have their mothers living with them or their parents, aging parents. It's a great aging in place, too. I think that AARP has jumped on it, thinking that, you know, this is something they really want to promote. And I think it's, you know, I think it's certainly an option, but it's not for everybody. Clovis has a plan book that they put together, teach school on the city of Clovis, ADU. If you put that in a search engine, you'll find that they have some, they created some plans that are, you know, meant to be ADUs, and they're right off the shelf, and you can go take it to a contractor and get a quote. I would like to have a discussion about whether or not we see some of this as a possibility off of alleys, because it seems somewhat practical to me that if we already have an alley access and we require alleys in town, then maybe there's a design or two that we could support with certain sized lots that might be appropriate. And I don't want to leave, you know, with all this crafting of language, I really don't want to leave the public behind in the effort to create useful resources for them. Maybe it's a workshop, but maybe it's handouts, something on the website. And there's lots of things like that to borrow. We've got some young bright interns that can help us create that, and that will help to get the word out, hopefully in an accurate way, and allow people to make decisions in an informed way, too. So that ends my presentation. I know that there was, I gave you a couple of things just to glance over, so if you have some questions, you know, we could, we could talk about it a little bit. And if you have ideas going forward as you read about this or, you know, if you want to reach out to me, you know, this is gonna be a research topic and a conversation for at least the next several months. Ideally, I would like to see something in place, brought to the planning commission within two months, perhaps. within two months perhaps. I'm trying to be realistic. But if we have the interest, it would be, it would behoove us to have an ordinance in place, I think, that was, you know, served as a guide. That was my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Sorry to be late. My real job came first. So, yeah, I get the impression the government really, really wants this to happen in all the cities. And this is their new plan for infill development, which may not be real popular developers. It's their new plan for providing more low-cost housing, which is not that's a bad idea, but traditionally has been, not been popular with the traditional developers. And they're going to do it whether we like it or not. So we can't really resist it or refuse it, but we need to be flexible and work with it so that it creates a minimum of chaos, disturbance and problems. And I think that's doable. This concept of advantage, this advantages, the advantages of course is more low-cost housing, which is really well, I mean, whether you like it or not, is necessary. And it actually defeats urban sprawl. Urban sprawl is not a popular concept in, in these circles that are trying to promote increasing livability in the cities. They want to get away from the urban sprawl. So it defeats urban sprawl in that respect. And it is a type of infill development. Infill has been, has been popular with a lot of cities to try and, especially in the central core, to, to get more people who live in the downtown area, which makes the downtown more livable. So it is a type of infill development. And it actually does, you mentioned that it actually does offer the average homeowner an opportunity to get involved in real estate income, which is otherwise pretty difficult. The way it is now with your homeowner, you don't want to get involved in real estate development, you pretty much have to become a developer to do that, buy a piece of property and put up an apartment, building or duplex. This concept becomes very easy for the average homeowner to get involved in some real estate income, if you want to call it that. So it actually, as onerous as it might seem, there is a few advantages to this, but you also have to look at the disadvantages. And you mentioned the alley access. Maybe we finally get to use the alleys for something besides garbage collection. Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, we got these alleys and that's kind of a perfect venue, perfect venue for people to have their granny flat and get in and out of the alley. And we got 16-foot alleys, so there's enough, enough room to get a car in and out of. So that, that's, that's perfect. Disadvantages, it gets carried away and you don't control it. It can degrade the aesthetics, the aesthetics of a residential area pretty quick. Can create a lot of chaos. You don't want to, you don't want to have a $600,000, $700,000 single-family home, wake up one morning and your neighbor's put another tough shed on his driveway because he found out that he can put granny flat and then, you know, he didn't. So there has to be, you don't want that. That creates huge chaos between neighbors. So you don't avoid that from happening. Plus the, the lot, the loss of visual aesthetics when that kind of thing happens. So that's my fear. That's one of the worst things that can happen. How do you control that? We have to, we have to really sit down and have a discussion on how you prevent that. The loss of visual aesthetics and degradation of living. Happening at the same time by what the government wants to provide with this. More housing, more income housing. It's kind of a, a tough balance. So I read through the stuff you sent and we, it looks like there's a couple of ways we can get involved to mitigate any disadvantages with this. We're allowed to design standards. You know, when I looked through this, we're allowed to design standards. We have business. So we're not allowed to kill the concept, but we're allowed to design standards to modify the concept and control what goes in, what it looks like, how big it is, what it's made of. We really, really need to get some design standards like we already have for the North Kingsburg specific plan. And that same concept with regards to these ADUs. Design standards go a long way to mitigate visual aesthetic problems and livability problems and, and make it look at use. So, you know, you talk about setting up an ordinance, great. Well, right from the get-go, we got to get somebody or, or, you know, some expert or, we need to do, you know, we really need to put some design standards in the ordinance for ADUs, have some control over it. And I'm trying to even think what those design standards might be. I'm sure there's people more experienced and built in all this than I am. I may have some ideas, but I'd have to look at it a little more. But that's what, that's really important to me. You can't stop what's going in to control what it looks like and et cetera, et cetera. So design standards are really important. And then I start to think about, okay, then the next time we have a new residential development come in, and this concept's not going away, and it's going to become the norm, then next you better think about next new residential development, putting in the ADU when they construct the house. Why construct the house on a new residential development? And then six months later, the homeowner's coming in wanting to put up an ADU? It seems ridiculous. That's the time to put the ADU in when the new house gets constructed. And you say, okay, well, we're going to put up a bunch of single-family homes, or three bedrooms, four bedrooms.
But that's not how the law is written.
10,000 square foot lot. And we require the developer on 50% of the lots or 30% or whatever to put an ADU-type addition so it can be, so it can be used as an ADU for a second family or whatever. And then you have absolute control over the, over the visual aesthetics and, and the livability. That's the time to do it because then it fits in with the rest of the house. It's part of the construction. It's planned properly. It's all set up and ready to go. So when the homeowner moves in, that option is available to him right there. He doesn't have to exercise the option, but it's available to him right there. There are people who would preferentially buy that house because the developer has put in a thousand square foot granny flat in the back, attached to the house, which is functional with the rest of the house on the lot. There are people preferentially buy that house, looking forward to us. That's the time to do it. So the city council needs to start thinking about it with the planning commission, setting up changes to north specific plan, general plan, whatever. I mean, I, I think that's the time to do it with it. You know, if this is coming in now, we're going to be able to build a new house, really. Not six months. It seems ridiculous to get somebody to buy a $700,000 house and then a year later he's coming to us looking to put up a, an ADU in the back of it. You know what I mean? You understand what I'm saying? So design standards? Talk about ADUs going in or some type of ADU concept going in as part of new housing? Because that's really where it should go in.
No.
And.
No.
So, so how do we, how do we start this? Where do we take these concepts to get approval? City council or does? The planning commission can make recommendations, planning can make recommendations through the city council. So should the planning commission put our thinking caps on, come up with some ideas? Maybe that's the best way to go. And then send that off to the city council so they could run it by them? Or, or we have a joint meeting and say, hey, listen, here's some of the concepts that we think should, and then the city council agrees with and then we go ahead and draft the ordinance?
That, that may be, that may be the, one of the directions to go. And I do know that there are models of homes in Fresno even that have a, you know, they have a, you know, a mother-in-law suite or whatever you might call it, and attached a junior ADU, only maybe even bigger, it's already built in. And I think there are, there's a lot of families, especially in Central Valley, who are culturally, they're taking care of, you know, a, a grandmother or, you know, even an adult child who's saving money for, for their first home or, or whatever. So, you know, that, I, I know that there are plans out there that, that could be, you know, encouraged, maybe through, through adding to the allocation process some points to, to do that. I, it's, I do know that developers tend to be some of the more conservative people that I know in terms of taking chances on product. They, they know it works and, and it, it can be a little challenging to open up a conversation about, about doing something that they, you know, they, they, they can't look at the hard numbers and say, oh, no, we know what this is going to sound. But I, but I, I hear what you're saying about integrating that while you're in, in the building stage. We, we've got some, some movement on actually making garages enter through alleys. And that was, you know, that was, that was a win. So, you know, and I think maybe, you know, the next step, I remember being in Bothman, Montana about 10 years ago and there was a brand-new subdivision there and they were building, because they, they, you know, they had such a strong rental market there and with no university, but just all the tourism, they were building ADUs right on top of garages right off of that. You know, that was, that was what they, they knew that would sell. And now will that, will that work for Kingsburg? You know, with good design, maybe that you would get some, some people that would be interested in that. It's, you know, and it's, it, to, to, I, I hear your concern about retrofitting that in like two years later or whatever. You, you, then you had that struggle with, with placement on the lot and access to it. And, you know, how is it going to, is it going to match the existing structure? What is the landscape going to look like? I mean, it's a lot easier to plan going into that. So that's something to, that's something to research to see if there's other cities that have offered encouragements or incentives for that. I think there's always a, a bit way to go and you can test the waters and see what happens. And you're right, they're not going away. I don't think you're going to see a ground swell necessarily. There's still, I was talking to Carol before the meeting. I said, well, what's, what's the price per square foot for construction in, in the, you know, in the Central Valley? You know, you're still looking at $100,000 to put a detached ADU from the ground.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
I'm not. Who is speaking? You know, that's a, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money. So, you know, it depends on the size, right? But I think it was $100, $150 a square foot. Plus permitting.
Because once you pull electrical and everything else.
Right, right. So still, still the investment. But it would be, it would really, it would really be a good idea to, to encourage that exploration to see whether, and maybe, you know, other, talk to some other developers to see in the area to see what they've done or what they've considered.
Yeah, and I talked about the new developments. Many times, even with city council, not making it an option, but making it more of a requirement for the new developers to put in at least some minimal multi-family housing. Like there's, there's no reason that when the developer puts up 100 homes, he can't put up a few duplexes or a few triflexes on the corner. And because the, the construction, the, the modern construction technique and abilities can make a duplex and triplex look like a single-family home. I mean, there's just myriad examples of what they're doing with that to blend it in with the existing architecture so that you don't even know it's a duplex. And I believe they should be required to do that for a certain percentage of homes in the new development. It's not an apartment building, it's not a penthouse, but if it's multi-family, duplex, triplex, unit, quadriflex, it's just, you end up, it just, you make it look like a penthouse. Make it do that. They don't like to do that. I'm not quite sure why. Probably because they're not in the rental business, they're in the home sale business. But like you said, the developers have this preconceived notion that I put up a duplex, what am I going to do with it? I'm not in the rental business, I want to sell it to somebody who's going to buy it. You, you get the impression that nobody ever wants to buy a duplex as, as a form of rental income. And I think that's ridiculous. I think there's a, I think there's a market out there for, and I know there's a market out there for people who want to buy those, those types of homes to rent among.
Well, we, we may enter that, that phase of that discussion as we go through the housing element. In the next year and a half, we have 826 units to zone for that have to go somewhere. And, and that may be one option that, that is, that is considered, that we either strongly encourage or require that, that type of development as a portion of, of a larger single-family plan, you know, going forward. A lot of that is, is, seems to be driven by, by economics. I, I don't, I'm not an investor, so I, I don't always know what, when things are up and when things are down when it comes to multifamily housing. Especially it seems like when they're, when they're up, we get a lot of phone calls. And we, actually we have in the last, since I've been here, we've, we've had several inquiries about, you know, where, where, where are you, where are your apartments? I want to build a apartment. Where, where can I do that in Kingsburg? Well, you know, do, do, you know, is it something that we want to have sort of as a, as a standalone? Or do we want to integrate it into existing communities and, and see, you know, how that, how that works out too? So I think that that's certainly been a, a, a popular trend in other places. So that's, that's a discussion to, to have in the, in the near future. But I think that, you know, and ADUs will come towards our, our, our required housing numbers. It's kind of one-dee, two-dee's. It's not going to, we're not going to get all 880, you know, or 826 of them as ADUs. But, but it's, it's certainly, it, I think the time is, is good, it gives good timing to have, to explore that ordinance and to, to now see who has pushed the boundaries a little bit in terms of what could be, well, what, what we could ask for legally. And still get that passing grade from ACED and, and get it, get it on the books because it would help, it would help the community and it would certainly help staff in terms of giving us some guideline. Because right now, you know, a lot of times when people come in, we just sort of have to say, yeah, you, you can do it. We don't, we can't, we can't require all that much, as much as we could.
What's the timeline for an order, ADU ordinance?
Well, as I said, I think what I would need to do is research and draft one and then send it to ACED. So I'd make sure that we don't go through the whole process and not get my passing grade, right? I need to, I need to make sure. And but I think they, they've offered to review them while they're in draft stage, which would be really helpful because if I'm going to, you know, I, I'm the staff, I'm the staff. And if I'm going to go through the work, I want to make sure that it meets their requirements and doesn't, you know, that, and yet, yet we get as much as we can for what we can require in terms of design and, you know, the site and, you know, the driveway approaches and whatever, you know, whatever we decided to approach. You know, I would load it up and see what they X out. That's what I would do.
So would that be the time, would that be the time then to, to, to put in some design standards?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Whatever we, whatever we can. Yeah, and that's, and that's the time that I would, you know, I would look to others who care equally about the time. Like, you know, their, their, their place downtown and certainly City Santa Barbara. You know, other, other places up north too, that really, you know, design comes, you know, it's, it's formal for them, it's part of their, of their identity. And so I, I want to, I would want to make sure that we, you know, we ask for everything we could legally. No good sign.
One of the things that with ADUs and alleys would.
Yes. Right, right. And you wouldn't have to have a drive approach, shared drive approach in the front because you would already have one in the back. I mean, and, and parking will have to, will have to sort itself out. I mean, I think there are a lot of cities that are much, will be much more impacted by, if you go to the city of Galita, for instance, and you go down by Angla Vista, there, you know, there's just cars and cars and cars and cars all over. And, you know, often it's single, single-family, single garages there with some older housing stuff. older housing stock, and, you know, now they don't have to require parking, so, you know, it's just going to really impact them. We have a different kind of impact with parking, because a lot of people use bigger trucks, not only for their work, but just for pleasure, and that can be challenging to fit, so they are bigger vehicles, anybody's driveway. And, you know, as much as I don't want to see more on-street parking as a result of not requiring parking to be replaced, is, you know, that's sort of the natural. So, yes, to have somebody access from the back, that would lessen that impact, I would hope. And nobody really wants to drag their groceries, you know, throughout the whole front lawn and back into their, you know, back of the house. I mean, they would like to pull up, I would imagine, closer to where they live and be able to unload children or groceries or whatever, so.
Are you familiar if any of the other small towns in the area have put together some ordinances yet, such as Hamford or more?
No, that might be useful, that might be useful to reach out. I know I met with the community development directors of Reedley and Sanger and so much, and none of them are quite.
There yet.
Yeah, they've got other priorities, I think they're not quite there yet, but I'm sure if I started to lead that, they too would be looking over my shoulders to get the grade, because, you know, that's how, that's how we work, and hopefully we share best practices. And if we can, you know, if there's something that we can do that we know that, you know, is legally allowed.
Even in areas such as, like, closer to Medesto, the northern valley.
Maybe Tru-Lock.
Right, Tru-Lock.
Or, really.
Atwater, Ritten, all those little places, especially if they have a lot of alley entrances, too.
They do, and they have that increased price pressure with the Bay Area housing.
Exactly.
So, you're right, I should, I should be looking, or Livermore.
Yes, Livermore for sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, those are all good ideas, wherever you see those, you know, the impact of, and no, I will say that, you know, in LA, I know that LA can be pretty, Colley can be pretty built out, but I believe that a fifth of their permits slash year were ADUs.
That's not a lot, right?
But, you know, it's viewed as a source of rental income, and, you know, it's just, it's a plus, and that's the way they look at it. So, they had to develop a streamlined approval process and a lot of materials to guide people through that, through that process.
For sure. I would say probably 35% to 50% of my family that lives in the Bay Area live in an ADU or have an ADU building attached to the home they own. Like, it's just how you live now.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I think that's true for younger people, too, and my adult children are quite, you know, home buying is, that's a heavy lift for younger people now, and so I think to have them have their private space and, you know, it's more appealing than, you know, innovative, because it's part of a building for some people. And I had one of my, I had an ADU on my property, and we talked a lot about personal stuff, but that, it was a real benefit for me. And I really, I saw the benefit of it when I bought the house, and it was permitted, so I didn't have to go through all that. But it's relieved, it's relieved. I mean, I see when, how it works, how it can work.
And there are several housing developments that do make it available for you. There are, I know in the Francisco Valley, and that was 15, 16 years ago, they were already building that up in Fresno, so there are plenty, just giving them like incentives or.
Int incentives are just something to just in general education, you know, they're all about the pencils out, so that, I understand that, that's their business. So, you know, to be conscious of that, and yet, to still encourage that in whatever way we can, will give us the variety of housing that we're looking for, and the opportunity for homeowners to take the hurt a little bit off the mortgage, too. Or, move there, and, you know, when you get old, you bring out the big house, and let in the little ones six months out of the year or something. So, there's all kinds of ways these days in the United States.
So, if we get the contact from the League of California Cities, they sometimes tell me, because they're a central processing unit for the cities for a lot of these new concepts that come down from the government that all the cities have to deal with, and they're a real good source of information.
Yes, absolutely, I would agree. Thank you for that reminder. So, yeah, I mean, it's a research project, but, you know, with your referral, that's, you know, that's a direction I would like to head in. I think, I think just given the number of inquiries we've gotten recently, makes me realize that having something that's well thought out, that's on the book, it would be an advantage at this point, instead of just kind of letting it, letting it go to some unknown time in the future, and then we get, and then we get what we don't require, right? A default to the law.
Well, and it shows the change that's happening in the city and what's starting to be required now, and that people are starting to feel, this is my kind of thought.
Yes.
Which is right, that's right.
Anybody online that wishes to comment? Or any none? I believe I have my direction. If there's anybody else that wants to participate, or I would strongly also encourage you just to reach out if you've got any ideas after hearing some of this and want to share them, just drop me an email, and, you know, this is going to be my next, one of my next big projects, so. Hopefully, it'll wrap up in six months at the most, and we can give something to the public, also to give them some, you know, guidelines, this is where they go. And we do have some good resources in the current building inspection services that have served Kingsburg recently, that, most of them are from downtown, so they come with some new ideas, and that's very useful. All right, for that, thank you. Now, it's your holiday is almost beginning.
All right, well, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. And remind, the League of California Cities is a good resource, too, I'm sure.
Yeah, they are real good. We don't have the time to start a formal meeting, I guess.
Yeah, it's a workup.
Yeah, workup, okay.
I think we're, you can, thank you for having us.
And if you have any questions, you know, I'll, I'll adjourn for that.
Thank you.